Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's June first of two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome, everyone. Let's begin the meeting. Call in it to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi Dana.
Hi Dana. So approval of the agenda. I did make a mistake on the public comment. We will certainly, if anyone wants to talk about short-term rentals, but public comment tonight is not only on the short-term rentals. So really should just read public comment. We can delete the rest.
I had a question about whether there's going to be any discussion on the old business of the update on the subdivision or no? Because I didn't see that there. So should we include that on the old business?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Motion to approve with the changes.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? I think we've gotten everything, all the changes we need. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I think that was a delay.
Was that a delay?
That was a Zoom-ism. So we are at public comment, not quite at the subdivision yet. That's next. But is, is there some, would you like to speak to the group tonight? Or do you have some questions?
Okay.
And could, and could you give your, start with your name?
I'm sorry?
Start with your name if you would.
Melody Hemingway, I was here at the last meeting. And I, I have a copy of the minutes. We're just wondering, first of all, is this the same draft as the last meeting or is this a revised one?
Did you get that from the website? You got that on the website?
Yeah.
Then that's the same. Nothing, nothing, nothing's been changed here.
Oh, nothing's been changed. Okay, that was my question. But, um. Anyway, um, I was just looking at the purpose of this one here and I thought perfectly the ordinance and because of fire safety, the firemen that were here, the police chief that was here.
Excuse me, is she close enough to the mic for, can you guys hear her?
No. Andy, you got your hand up, can?
Yes, would you ask her to move in front of the microphone, please Barbara? It's, I can't hear her well at all.
Well, we can do, just in case, Norm. We'll put you in this chair.
Melody. Okay, I'll just put you right here.
So I guess we're going with the same draft that was last time. So the purpose has not changed at all.
We do have an updated one. The town attorney has gone through it and that's later on in the agenda.
Oh, is it going to be on the, passed out for people to see or?
The new draft. Members have a copy, but it's the first time we've looked at it.
So you're not ready for us to look at it, to question anything, a difference between last one and this one? Okay. So I, I just won't talk about what I was going to then because it may have changed.
Well, you can certainly mention what you have as a concern and then we can discuss that when we, when we look at our version.
Okay. So anyway, because the police chief was here and the fire people were here and there was no issues about what the concerns were in the purpose. I ju, I just don't know if my, I have an Airbnb in my home and so I'm familiar with the way things go. And it's, and it's, I hate to think about having an ordinance where it's really not necessary and if it's a matter of the one percent tax, pay the tax, but I, I just can't even think about having someone come for a few days and then have all this paperwork and fines and fees, the state of Vermont, the fire department, everybody coming in and checking out. I, I can check it out. I live there all the time. If I had an issue, I would call the police like, it's no different than if you had friends and family come to stay in your house for a short length of time and then you had an ordinance that you had guidelines to fill out when it's not needed. And one reason we went with Airbnb was that the long-term rental problem is so huge. I, I guess there's no controlling it. People can come and trash your place and leave in a mess and have, and there's no recourse like the Holiday Inn. So I, I just, um, and the other thing, I didn't notice that I know Stephanie Cornell was here as well that gave a lot of information because she manages Airbnbs and, but no meeting was set up to discuss anything with her or the other lady that was from early.
No, we didn't take any action after the hearing three weeks ago. We're going to be, we're going to be discussing it tonight as a group.
So you'll be contacting them?
I don't know. I don't know what the group is going to come up with.
Sorry?
No, I'm not sure. We're, we're going to discuss this tonight and talk about next steps.
Oh, okay.
We don't know what they are at this point.
And, and the other question I have is there was a mention in the minutes about the approximately three thousand dollars fee for a vendor to monitor all of this. And I was just wondering where that figure came from. It seems like it would cost a lot of money to go do everything that's in this thing here for, I don't know how many Airbnbs there are.
Yeah.
I don't think there's that many.
Yeah, it was based on how many we think they are and what the going rate is for that kind of service.
So it's like, it's a
Okay, I can, I can, I can, it was okay Barbara, I can address that. So it's kind of two different things.
Yeah.
The three thousand dollars is not a company that's going to manage the ordinance for us. That's not what that's, that's not going to, there's no company that's going to do that for us. The three thousand dollars was to hire a vendor that they give us a report on Airbnb usage in the town once a week.
How did they get that? They go on Airbnb?
They, they go, they, they, it's not just Airbnb. They go on, there's about thirty, there's about thirty to thirty-five short-term rental sites out there. They go through all of them. These are variety of data and metrics to determine ones that, make sure they're ones that are in the town and we cross-reference our information to make sure the addresses line up. But they identify short-term rental property usage in the town for us. That's what that's for.
They determine what?
Short-term rental property usage.
Usage, okay, like?
So like if you list your house on Airbnb and you listed on VRBO and you listed, you know, all these different sites, we would get a report that says this property is on all these different sites.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's what, that's, that's what they do.
So who would, would monitor all that?
It's in the ordinance. It, it would be Bill.
Largely me.
It would be Bill. It would be the health officer. It would be the fire chief and the police.
The fire chief doesn't really, the Division of Fire Safety would, is involved, but the fire department is not actually involved in, in managing the ordinance.
Yeah, there's, you know.
How did you happen to come up with the Airbnb, this whole thing, the select board? It was all their idea to check it out?
It was actually my idea.
And why was that?
Based upon things I've seen in other towns and talking with the towns and they said, you know, we, we didn't realize how many we had until we started to just have a bunch of people ask questions about it and they had some issues. So we looked at what's the, what's, you know, better. And that was one of the topics brought up the other night is well, if there's no problem, why do we need an ordinance? And you know, if there, if we found there was a problem managing short-term rentals, it's, it's a six to eight to ten month process from beginning to an ordinance being into effect. So if we find out tomorrow we have a problem starting from square one, it could be, it'd be into next year before we could actually do anything to identify it. So.
I'm, I'm going to step in now. This is a regular meeting. We had the, the public meeting three weeks ago. You're, you're welcome to stay and listen.
Is it the same thing as last week?
No, no.
No, no, this is a regular planning commission meeting. We've got some folks here who want to do a subdivision. We've got some other things on our agenda.
Okay.
So I kind of have to move things along. You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, no, I just, I just had questions on that and I was just wondering, okay, then when would you be having another meeting for, like last week for public?
We, we may or may not have another public meeting. We'll talk about that tonight if, if someone wants to.
I mean, I just, I won't, I, I don't.
We had a pretty lengthy public meeting three weeks ago.
Yes, and so I just was wondering, okay, I guess it is what it is.
You, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to, to, we, you know, we use, the public comment usually, when it's not a public meeting, we try to restrict it to two minutes so we can keep our agenda going and.
So you're going to go back to the select board with the information you received last?
We will be talking tonight about what we will do for next steps. Yeah.
And you're welcome to stay and listen to our debate.
It was not about the Airbnb. That was.
It will be.
It's, it's on the agenda.
I'll stay then.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So and I don't see any other public. So we can move down to new business, which would be the Cluckston subdivision. And if you wouldn't mind just coming up and maybe moving those chairs over, we can. It's the people on Zoom and the meeting's being recorded by local public access. So we have got, everyone should have a preliminary plat in front of them. And you should have received the beginnings of Form One being filled out and the cover letter from the Cluckstons. So just to make sure you've got those materials and then I'll turn it over to you to just kind of give us an overview.
Sure. Uh, so I am Bonnie Cluckston. My husband David and I currently live in Charlottesville, Virginia. And I grew up here in Rutland. I went to Christ the King and MSJ. And my parents, my late parents' home is at three forty-nine Killington Avenue. It sits on a, a lot that's about seven acres or so. When my mom passed away, she left the property in a trust. And my husband and I would like to buy two acres of the seven and build our home there. And, and we are both retired and plan to spend our retirement years here in Rutland.
Okay.
Welcome.
So we've got the contiguous property owners listed on here. We've got the plat, the preliminary plat. So if, yeah, go ahead and look at that. If we can just go down this list as a group here.
So Barbara, when they came in, there were no waivers. Everything was, everything was the yes in there. So we did talk about that may not actually be accurate or appropriate. So we may need to check off some of those as a waiver.
Okay.
And we, we had to talk to them about why for some of the bigger ones like all the trees. So we did talk about some of those things. We should probably check off some of the ones that need to be.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Well, let's go through the plat first. So number one is boundaries and area of contiguous property of order. I think that's on there.
Uh, yeah. There are one, there are nine contiguous properties, one, two.
They're on, they're on both sides all the way around.
Oh, on this side as we. What side chapel was that?
That's right.
The whole.
And then there's another property on.
Kelly?
On the east side.
Yep, okay, so there's one. Yep, got it. Thank you.
Are we okay with that one?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, boundaries and area of property subdivided. Okay. Proposed subdivision lines. Name and address of professional preparer. Numerical and graphic scale of planned date and north arrow.
Yep.
Good on that one. Number six, existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes.
Soon we're going to a one, so.
Yeah, basically. Isn't that one that we pretty routinely wave? Unless there's something real dramatic, like a really steep ledge, and there, there, there isn't.
Okay, and yeah, the next one is sometimes a little problematic, two proposed improvements, including roads, utilities and utility easements and rights of way and structures.
It is on there though, isn't it?
So.
Yeah, it is.
And the location map. I saw that, yeah. Okay. So we're looking at, because of their summer schedule, we're looking at the final hearing being a few meetings off. It'll be August third, right? Still, still want that. And we can take a look at the waivers. This will be a minor subdivision. And which, you said yes for all of, this will be for the final plat requirements. Do you know offhand? Do you have a, a copy of this to, to tell us which ones you may want to waiver on?
We don't. And you know, and I, and I will say, when I spoke with John Lepre, who put the plat together for us, I asked whether I should how I should respond to those questions. And he, he looked and said, based on what he put together, he said, just, just reply yes, which I realize now was, was not correct.
Yeah. But yeah, it's easily, easily done. Let's see, which ones? We can take a quick look at this.
I identified five myself. I don't know if that will be helpful or.
Yeah, which ones Dana?
Seven, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two and twenty-five. That was just from my perspective, quickly going over this.
Okay, and those sound like familiar numbers.
Yes.
Um, seven. Seven is the identification of zoning districts applicable to the area to be subdivided and the entire tract. That would be a waiver because we don't have zoning. Eighteen, location of all trees on site. Are there many trees?
Many.
Too many. Nineteen, all information specified in nine through eighteen with respect to adjacent land of owner and with respect to adjacent land of others to a distance of one hundred feet. Why did you check that one?
Because it includes the same things that are in, in eighteen in terms of trees and things. So for granting an exemption or if they're requesting a waiver for eighteen, then they would have to request a waiver from eighteen because we're waving the same thing. That's the only rational.
That gets us every time. And number, uh, number twenty-two, if a private sewage disposal is required, it should comply with Vermont statute.
That it wasn't identified. That's why I circled that. I wasn't sure whether they were doing private.
We have the permits. Those permits are, have been completed and are somewhere here in the building.
You don't need a waiver for that.
I don't think we do. Right, yeah.
That was just my question.
Yeah, that's, that's fine Dana, that's fine. And number twenty-five, requested waivers, variances and the reasons therefore. Yes or no? That's not really a waiver.
Uh, no, but if they were asking for a waiver, they would have to have a rationale. And if we don't have the waiver, then we don't have the rationale. Therefore, I flag twenty-five.
Norm.
Apologize for being late. I used to live, this property just runs on Killington Avenue.
On Killington Avenue.
And how far from the intersection with Talon Road?
Uh, two driveways down, across from Sunset Drive.
Okay, so it's on the, it's north side?
As you're going up Killington Avenue.
It's on the left.
It's on the left.
Okay, I, I lived on. Didn't remember what it is. Now Eastridge Terrace for a while.
Right.
Okay, so this is the wooded area between the last house at Killen.
That's right.
And Columbus.
And Columbus.
You have a question, Norm?
No, I just was trying to identify the, the property. Make sure I hadn't, age hadn't robbed me of my hammer.
Any decision?
I'm sorry?
Getting back to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Since we will be requesting at least two waivers, we will need the rationale that goes along with that.
So we're looking at waivers for seven, eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yep.
And then the explanation of twenty-five. And usually if you just come with a verbal description.
Okay.
I don't think any of those mean entail changing the plat at all. So yeah, it's like you can write it out or we can do it verbally for our final hearing.
Okay.
And the final plat, Bill, the dimensions.
Are on there.
Yep. Yep, yep. This is just proposed. This isn't surveyed yet. They haven't, they haven't set the monuments. Yep.
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
This is, this is a proposal. There'll be, they've got to actually survey it and show the monuments, ones of setting.
And actually the final plat is not due until three weeks, three months?
Many days.
Ninety days after, if you get approval on the third.
Okay.
But we do need a final survey.
Within the ninety days after the third?
That's the final plat. We would like to see the official survey at the final, at the hearing.
At the hearing. We need it for the hearing, the final survey.
Okay.
Anything else that which? So okay, we'll meet at the same time, six thirty PM on the third.
Okay. And so, just so I make sure that we get to what you need, that you need a final survey and a, and a final plat.
A final plat. You can wait to do that to see if you get, you know, approval.
Okay.
Or you can do it any, you could do it at any point if you want.
Okay. Okay.
Because that's not due at the hearing, the final plat.
Do you need the survey in advance of the meeting?
Yeah.
We don't have to. I mean, i, if it is ready.
Send it to Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as, as long as we have it at the meeting, we have copies.
Okay.
Yeah. Day of is okay, but it's close.
Okay.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions? Advice? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully we've answered all of your questions.
Yes.
Very comprehensive. We sometimes get paperwork that is not quite as complete, so we want to, for many people, having done due diligence, even though you didn't know. That's why we have to hear.
Great. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
There is one question I have.
For them?
On this, uh, do you plan a site visit up there on?
I don't.
We get all the paperwork together?
I don't know if it's necessary for a minor subdivision like this.
We haven't been doing.
We haven't done it on, on minor subdivisions.
Okay. If you're comfortable with the, the information that's on the papers.
I think so. Everybody good with that?
It's just carving out a, a section of the already exist.
Already existing parcel.
Partial, right. But then they should have the approval of the septic and everything in the state. Everything should be approved by the state.
And it'll be helpful to have that at the, at the final hearing as well. Just so that you said, your husband said that, that that was already taken care of. So we can just have a copy for us that we can then check it off. We'll just make it a little more efficient, let the meeting moves.
Norm, and, and the well location.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
They have to be a certain distance apart, so.
Of course, has the state already seen this subdivision?
Yes, well, not the subdivision itself, but they have, they have seen the, the request for the septic and the well. And they've seen the drawings and they have approved it. And it was recorded here in the town some months ago.
So they're, they're aware that you're going to subdivide.
Correct.
And where you're going to be. Okay.
In fact, when we recorded the, the permits here in town hall, we, might have been from Bill. I'm not sure. We, we got a letter saying, hey, we got these permits. You realize you have to subdivide, which we did.
Yeah.
But.
I sent that to you. I sent you something once.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
If you have any questions, Bill's the one to go to.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, lost my agenda here. Here it is. So just a reminder, since we have a couple people on Zoom, just make sure that preferably you get recognized by the chair. And we want to make sure anyone who wants to speak up, you know, from the audience is near a mic too. So we've run into a few issues where those who are on Zoom have not been able to hear everything. So Norm, did you have a question? Okay, so let's go down to old business and we'll take up the, the new short-term rentals ordinance that you all should have a copy of. This is with the town attorney additions. And Bill, can you give us a synopsis of all of the many changes that he made? None of them are really substantive.
In, in short, Kevin had a, a lot to say about it, but it only, it resulted in a few changes. It actually removed some, some things altogether. So I didn't, I didn't do a comparison copy. It just, it was, it was kind of got difficult, but the copy you have reflects all the changes. It was things that he gave, we picked some statutory references. He added definitions for us, ones, ones we were looking for. We had one, one of them we had was adverse impact and he said it does not need to be defined because it's part of the purpose. It's, it does need to be defined. So that, that line came out. We cleaned up some other ones, like short-term rental, we referenced the statute for the definition because if their definition changes, ours automatically does. So that, that helps. Uh, we linked, we, we cleaned up, we got definition for occupant. We said some things that eliminate, and, and things eliminate in very valid reasons why, because they're either redundant or not necessary. So they're just gone. Like compliance with applicable laws. He's like, it's a given. They have to. So that whole section just comes out. So that, that was an easy one. We changed the order of some things in section seven. He says the prior, like to give it a better priority, move some things up and, up and down the list. And long explanation why. We talked, he talked about having the inspection by Division of Fire Safety prerequisite of applying. So, which, which does make sense that, you know, one's going to come first. And I think that makes sense. So in, in thinking about that, I think we probably will push for this being effective till like, maybe like next summer to give that a chance to kind of work its way through.
So they would need proof of that?
Yeah, that, that would be prerequisite. So. Yeah, that, that would be prerequisite, so, yep, um, and I gotta, I gotta comment on that in a second. Uh, and he said to, a couple things on, on um. Section eight, which was enforcement, he says, get rid of waivers, he's like, they don't do any good, they're ambiguous, they can lead to confusion and, and inconsistent application, he's like, just, just get rid of them, he says it causes more problems than it solves. So we took those out. Uh, and he also said to um, that we had in there that, like basically they, the ca- the cum- the cumulative effect ended at the end of the year, he's like. Get rid of that, he's like, it just, it lets people that are not doing things correctly just kind of reset every, every year, he's like, get rid of that, so that's, that's gone. Um, and we added a section on uh revoking a permit for, for a couple reasons, so that, that's, that's a new section at the end.
That's a new eight.
Yeah, so this is all renumbered and reorganized. Um, I, after, and after getting his comments and thinking about the inspection should come before registration, which, that, that's updated in there as well. Um, I reached out to, uh, we had one of the inspectors for fire safety come by and talk to me about, about the stuff, um, which also isn't here, their view on inspections is, we, they want to review them all. So I had put some just preliminary language in there about a dwelling unit capacity of six or more requires it, he's like, I don't, we don't care, we want to, we want to inspect them all once. If there's a complaint, if it, you know, we say, if, if, if a renter has a complaint, if we have an issue, then they can go back. But he said, once we're, once we're good, we're good. So there, we could have talked about, there were some o- other towns require like annually, he's like, it becomes too much, they can't do it, which, which totally makes sense, so. He said, once they're, once they have it inspected, we are good unless there's a complaint.
So this inspection would be looking for like sprinklers and.
Yeah, all their.
Fire exits.
Their, their criteria. Um, so I, I reached back out to, to, to Matt, who's the inspector, and I said, hey, you guys are doing one in the area? Can I tag along and see what you guys look for? He's like, absolutely, so the next time they get one in the area, I'm going to go with them and see what it's all about. It doesn't go.
Should be scheduled. Dana.
Um, I had flagged that section because uh, I, my question was, what is the frequency?
Yep.
And um, I, I think that we could clarify that by saying, uh, it's section, well, it's section six, uh, paragraph ten. It's on the page eight. I mean, they're not numbered, but.
Yeah, I know that.
Um, um, so I just had a question there, and I think we can clarify that, that there's initial inspection is required, uh, subsequent inspections would only be required if there were complaints or something like that.
So you want to change additional to subsequent?
Uh, let me read it again.
Which one are we on?
Uh, section ten, it's at the top of the page.
Six number ten.
Excuse me, section six number ten. The property owner shall contact the Division of Fire Safety for inspection.
Sorry.
Having a completed inspection clarifying compliance is a requirement for the application. Additional inspections will be required if a complaint is filed. Um, I, I guess in reading that, it, it didn't indicate that uh, an inspection was only required once ever unless there were, maybe it was my reading of it.
Okay, couldn't it just say at the end of that, or says required with the application process, couldn't it say that this inspection is only required one time unless?
That, right, that's, that's what I was.
Additional inspections.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
Or, yeah. Will only be required one time, and then additional inspections will be.
This is a one-time requirement unless, yeah, I mean.
And then give the reasons why.
Right, yep. I mean, that was.
An additional sentence there.
Just adding, or at least a clause within the sentence, but it, it just, it caused me to think about whether it could be.
So oh, oh, like only one's inspection will be required unless an additional one is needed for the following reasons?
Unless, unless a complaint is.
Unless the complaint is filed, the property changes owners or things, I, I mean, that line is exactly, is fine, it was just not clear in my mind if this was an annual, uh, or a biannual or a five-year or.
So he said, he said they're one and done, which, which is fine, like that, that, that makes sense, I mean, that's. I think, I think it kind of resolves a lot of the issue around that.
Oh yeah, I mean, I, I, I like that, it was just a, a question that I had when I was reading it. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Looking forward to going on.
So we've, we've got a new draft, we've had a public meeting. We had um twenty-two, I, I, I redid the numbers, and with some of the couples that were here, we had twenty-two people um, at the hearing three weeks ago. Two were from out of town. And seven spoke against the ordinance. Of the twenty slash twenty-two. Um, and you know, the, the arguments were that it was an undue burden. And/or that it was too much like zoning. We're a town without zoning. So I think we've got, we've probably have a number of options in front of us. Um, once um Bill makes those corrections or those additions, um, we could send, we could vote to send the ordinance to the select board. We could, other options would be to edit it a little bit more, and Andy, I see your hand, just sec. Um, and then another option would be possibly to set up a committee and get some outside people. To help us work through, uh, Andy first. Uh, you're muted, Andy.
Am I on the air now?
Yeah.
Uh, I've thought an awful lot about this since the last meeting, and I'm still definitely, most definitely in favor of the ordinance personally. Uh, however, I think that the fees are going to be a major roadblock in having this passed. And I think that the town would be better served to have fees that are an absolute minimum. So that people will comply with this ordinance. Because to me, the, 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 some of the different things that we listed as, as purpose are valid, but really the, the two core issues are. Public safety for the renter of that particular piece of property and collection of, of the municipal tax, and this does take care of that. And so, to tell you the truth, I would favor zero fees to start with to get everyone to register. With keeping the fines high as they are. Um, certainly the fines are, if we're going to charge five hundred dollars for a four-bedroom um rental property annually, um, having. Fines of five hundred dollars is certainly not uh unrealistic for non-compliance. So that, that is my, my, what I would suggest for changes here is that we, I'm sure, I would be in favor of anything from zero, but certainly a. Absolute minimum amount to encourage everyone to uh, to be in compliance w- with this ordinance.
And get the fire safety inspection.
Yes, oh, absolutely, all that, that is um, from day one.
Yeah.
Before, before one room is occupied, um, it should be fire safety inspected, it, it, I, I think it should be noted, and certainly Bill would be able to better speak this than I am. An awful lot of our housing stock in Rutland Town is pre nineteen eighty, which means it really doesn't even have to have, it could conceivably not have any smoke detectors inside it at all. Uh, it doesn't seem logical in this day and age, but it's, it's quite possible, so uh, it, I think that inspection before the first day of, before the first day of rental is extremely important.
Uh, Bill, were you?
Yeah, so Andy, you're absolutely right, I mean, ev- every, numerous times when we go to, to houses for alarms, the detectors are usually out of date or not enough of them, so you're, you're absolutely right, that, that's an important aspect of it. The fee schedule, so that was completely, I will, and I've, I said this, it's completely arbitrary. I'll, that, it's kind of what, in line with a lot, well, a lot of other towns have, but, you know, if we want to say fifty and fifty, that's fine. The, the intent, so Andy, just, just so you know, the intent was to make sure that any costs we had that came from this ordinance, such as hiring that vendor for three thousand dollars. That we would be able to cover those costs, so there would be no extra costs for the, the taxpayers. So I, I, I understand the, the zero, but I think maybe, maybe we do, you know, we do fifty and fifty, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, you know, what, what the right number is, but.
Fifty is a flat fee in fifty per bedroom?
And that, and that's fine, so I did, I did some quick math, and, and that would still, it would cover it by a, by a small margin, so we, we could do that, but. Uh, that, that was why, Andy, was that, that we wanted to make sure that when we put the ordinance into effect, we were intending to sign an agreement with, with the vendor for the research. And those costs would be a hundred percent covered by those fees.
Andy, any response?
Yeah, I, 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 I fully agree with what, everything you've said, and I realize that that's where you went um from, so I think that what we should do is just open a dialogue as, I mean. I just set myself at zero just because that's where it could start, and we certainly have um, the fees that we have in there now, but I think we should really talk about them, and because. The, what we really want here is compliance, and the more people that are doing these, and if we double the number of, of uh homes that are. Uh, doing Airbnbs and the number is say sixty to a hundred, which I think is a realistic number in Rutland Town, um. We really don't have to have the fees that high to cover the three thousand dollar a year expense for the monitoring.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay.
So.
Norm, did, yeah, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
I had, I just have some of my customary nitpicking editorial changes, and I think I will just give them to Bill.
Yeah, yeah, let's keep this higher level right now. Um, yeah, that would be great. Um, yeah, Jim.
The last meeting in the, excuse me, that I attended, Bill indicated that there were some thirty properties. Or thirty locations in the town that he knew about. Um, would there be any, well, explain that a little further, I believe. That when the inspection process is finished. That you're going to find some other things in this packet that are going to probably want to be changed or amended. And that being the case, would there be any wisdom in making this document an interim? Document, say for a year or year and a half or whatever. And then in the, in the meantime, uh, deal with the other things that may or may not come to the surface.
What are you thinking of? What would be those other things? I'm not real clear.
I have no idea, but I'm guessing there's going to be some.
Some other safety type things?
Could be, could be, as, as Andy's pointed out, things like uh, smoke detectors, not uh, being.
Right, which, the, the fire inspection, uh, that should be on that list, it should be a standard list. Um, Jim, have you, have you ever um, been through an interim ordinance before? In, in your history here with the town?
Yeah, but this was years ago, when um, zoning was uh catching hold in the state, the, the first um ordinance that passed. By law was interim, I can't remember if it expired in, at the end of one year or two years, I believe it was two years. And then it either had to be renewed or rewritten or a combination. And um, that was common practice back in the seventies.
So it, it kind of sunset, it was only good for so long? It's interesting, Sherman?
I, I just had a question for them. What's the advantage of having an interim?
Big forces.
Well, let me, I'm sorry, I was, I was hesitating too long. No, what's the advantage of having an interim versus reviewing it at whatever time a- a- after one year and change it, changing it? If the change is necessary.
Let Jim answer, Dana.
The wisdom or the reasoning for the interim uh, for the, back in those days was. Because boards were changing, people were coming on the board with different views or maybe no views at all on some of these things. So there was a pattern roadmap in place of what had to happen to a um, regulation.
I- in practice, there wouldn't be much difference, would there, between an interim one and, 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 and another way of doing that would be a review? That's set up a timetable for, set up for that? Um. Dana?
Best practice from a policy standpoint is that you do, you do exactly what you just said, that you have, whatever ordinance we have or whatever regulations we have, uh, have a time schedule, maybe that's five years. But that way you review those to make sure that any statutory changes that are, are, remain relevant, because the legislature is changing things. And as we saw from our subdivision ordinance that we spent quite a bit of time going through, some of those references either no longer exist or are pointed in a different direction. And so best practice would say that you set up that schedule and that this ordinance will be reviewed on such and such a, a, a time schedule, and that I think would address Jim's, uh, Jim's concern.
Okay, so, so that's interesting, uh, interesting idea. Uh, what about the fees? Um, and, and the discussion Andy started?
There's a, there's a lot of work and some money gone into this, and I'm in agreement that there should be something going forward. At one time I didn't think so, but when I heard there was thirty properties, thirty locations. And my guess is that uh, some of them been around for a while, and. Um.
Yeah.
We need to cover the bases.
Just anecdotally, anecdotally, um, I ran into a resident of Shrewsbury over the weekend, and they estimate they have sixty short-term rentals in Shrewsbury. Um, which is a much smaller town, um, and uh, a- and it seems like they're much more noticeable, maybe, and.
But there's a lot of, a lot of construction going on in Shrewsbury in the last ten years too.
That's true, that's true. Um, okay, so there is some consensus to maybe.
I am not recommending that uh, message I just gave you, I'm just throwing it out there as something to consider.
That there'd be some fees that are left.
Right.
For registering.
But I think uh, Dana has a, a thought on that that would probably work.
So we've got um, a review period. Um, on, that we're talking about, that's on the floor, and we've got maybe reducing the fees that's on the floor, anything else?
The question that I have, Barbara, is uh, uh, at the, uh, at the last meeting. Uh, we let the um, people in attendance know that it wasn't our decision, it was the select board's decision, one, to examine the ordinance. And two, there'll be the final decision looking at the ordinance for uh, for implementation, and that we are doing the groundwork. Uh, for them, and the opportunity to provide direct input is something that we should probably. Uh, examine from the perspective of the woman from Burlington, who said that she would be uh, willing to help uh, share uh, what they have learned, and there was at least one or two people. Uh, present in the audience who said that they would be interested also. So the question that I have is, uh, would that be, and that would address the um, a member of the public from this evening, who is wondering about whether we're doing anything. From uh, from a planning commission perspective on ga- how we're gathering additional information. Uh, before we make a recommendation to the select board, unless of course, we're making a recommendation to the select board.
Yeah, we could do that too, right.
Right. So I I throw that out there uh as something. I think that was one of the uh options that you. Uh had uh identified at the outset of this discussion, and so I think that that's probably something this this group should. Uh uh examine to determine whether uh additional input from the the practitioners. Uh would be valuable for us to have before we make a final recommendation to the select board.
Sherman?
I just have a comment on that 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 idea came from the the person from Burlington who said that's what they did.
That's what they did.
And how much value there was. And Burlington has a very involved, very sophisticated. Uh ordinance uh with many, many details. And we have. If you think about our ordinance, it's simple. There's there is a fee that that's paid once a year. There's a one time uh inspection that's only hap- only happens once unless there's changes. That's it. That's the I mean. I and and we. And getting back to having getting more information, we had people here. We heard everything they said. I I I I mean, I think we've done our 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 duty in in going to the public to see what. What what there was to do, and just my this is my opinion. Uh so I'm.
I'll just ask, just do you have anything to say to respond to that, that? That 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 we're not addressing with the public? That we're not addressing what what was said the other night?
Just to you, what you just said now?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, oh, thank you. I just have this feeling. I get this feeling because I have Airbnb in my house. And I just get the feeling that it's got from everybody's, the way you it it's it's just a we're the enemy. If you're an Airbnb, you're you're the enemy. Um if you're a long term renter, then then that's fine. You don't have the rules and regs and ordinance and. And I think the board in general has a wrong idea of what. Listening to the people from last week, what Airbnb really is, and I think maybe. One of the reasons there's more Airbnbs coming along is the same reason. We we changed, we had a grandmother's apartment, our kids stay there, and we did some rent it out to friends and family. And then it got to the point where we didn't know anything about who was gonna rent from us. And landlords typically don't have a lot of rights as far as you get somebody in your apartment. And they trash it, and you can't get rid of them, and they don't pay you. So you not only lose the pay. Or you the money that you're trying to pay your taxes with, that's what we're trying to do is just pay our taxes. Not make a fortune, and we don't have people there all the time. But um.
Excuse me.
That's why we went to short term rental, because the people on Airbnb are that you know who they are, they have to belong. They're they're raided by their landlords. So we're raided as Airbnb hosts. And there's so many more restrictions already in place. Um, that you don't really have the problems that you do with long term, and I don't know. I mean. I I don't think we could probably have an Airbnb because we couldn't afford all this. And all this paperwork and everything, just to have a couple of people come and stay at your house every once in a while.
Okay, thank you.
That's my I we're not the big bad guys, you know, so what if you've got thirty, what difference does it make if there's not a problem and? And nobody from last meeting was saying there is a problem, but it's.
Okay.
It's like the boogeyman to everybody, and it's really not that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
So Jerry.
Sure. Yes, so um. I think that I I completely understand the public kind of thinking that. However, for somebody who owns long term rentals. There's a lot of money that has to be checked when it comes to the Department of Fire Safety. For long term rentals, we're we're in the same boat. I see it firsthand that to me, this all started out and I might might. And talking with Bill about safety, I still think that's the most important thing. I'm definitely into what everybody's echoing about, especially Andy about the fees. I I I don't think that we want to make villainize these villainize the the people of town. I I only have one true concern here that I'll just throw out there is that. In talking with Bill last week after the meeting, we were just chatting a little bit. I do have a little bit of concern about where fire safety. Standards may take the cost for these people. It may not take, it may take next to nothing. But it could take some money to make to have them comply and and quite a bit of it in certain cases. It's only a concern. I'm all for the ordinance, and I believe that. That everyone who has these types of businesses in town should expect that they need to, it's a it's a small price. To have for safety, in in my opinion. So I'm all for lowering the fees.
Yeah.
And 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 a little bit of paperwork and a and a small fee, but. I I I see it firsthand, and I do have a concern about where fire inspections may take it. And because I don't think any of us, none of us, it's our intention to to burden anyone in the town.
No, no. And one of our intentions is to level the playing field with other commercial watching establishments. They they have to make those, you know.
I agree. I agree. I agree with what I I truly do with what everybody's buddy's saying. I just thought I would I would float that. That first of all, long term rentals are required to do very similar things, so there there shouldn't be this. Uh notion that one of them doesn't have to do it, and the short term would have to. That's not the case. So.
Not cheap.
And it's not cheap, and it they they I've I've had them call and say, we're in the town of Proctor, we're coming to inspect your place. This is the day we're doing it. That can happen in any town and has happened, but the problem is is when they have time. So um so it one one of them is similar in that respect. They both get spanked.
Okay, Norm?
Yeah, I just would like to clarify one thing. You were assigned this task by the select.
Yes, I I know that.
And I don't believe the select board. Views. The people in the business of short term rental as bad guys.
I get that feeling, you know, oh, there's thirty of them springing up, and oh, what if there's going to be more?
I think as Jerry Verd clearly said. That this is a matter of public safety. And what a national concern like Airbnb. May propose may not fit some of our local experiences. And I think that's basically.
Norm, let's.
Trying to feel.
Let's keep, let's keep the discussion amongst ourselves.
Okay.
And and figure out where we're going. Uh Mary Beth, you're gonna tell us where we're going.
Sure, I and thank you, Jerry, because I was going to ask about long term rentals, but you beat me. Um, but I think um it's good that we're having this discussion, and I think it's worth. Um, meeting with the um the people that offered to meet with us, like Dana was saying. So I think before we make any. I think that should be the first step before we um make any recommendations or. Um, other significant changes, maybe meeting with a smaller group of people that offered to help that. Answer questions and share their experience.
Okay, um and. Would you be more specific, Mary Beth, about what we would um? How we would employ that group or what what the goal would be?
Um, let's see. Well, so for are we allowed to have committees made up of? A mix of planning commission and other people, or would it need to be? I guess there's that minimum number needs to be warned. I'm just wondering the logistics of if we should instead of a committee.
It is allowed, it would most likely need to be run through the select board first, but yeah, I don't see any. Issue of not being able to do it. If we had that approval. Um.
Barbara.
Yeah.
Just an observation to Mary Beth's uh question. We can set up. Oh, we have the authority to set up our own work groups or subcommittees.
We do.
The the question then might be whether we invite other people from the public to come in and give us feedback as that committee is. Rather than going Mary Beth's route unless, I mean, unless I misunderstood you, Mary Beth, in terms of forming a committee. Perhaps, no, I'm not gonna get into that. That's going down a rabbit hole. Uh uh rather than going to try and set up a committee, some kind of a standing committee. That would be comprised of both planning commission members and and the public. Be easier within our with the uh our purview to to set up our own committee to move this forward. And invite the public to participate, like we've done in the past.
That's a good point, Dana. Uh Andy?
Yeah, I I personally think that we have put together a really good ordinance here. And to me, the only the only stick point, if for lack of a better term, is the the fee the fee schedule attached to it. Uh I don't think we need to have to do any more work on it. I I I really think it's as as. It's definitive. It it takes care of the safety issues, takes care of the tax issue because it requires the the uh. That the um potential renter uh register properly with the state and pay the rooms and meals tax. Um, so I really think we're done here. And uh. I I think I I commend everybody for putting putting this thing together, and I I think that's what we should sit on it now. Uh work out the fee schedule or just send it to the uh select board with. A range of fees on there, because in the end, it is there going to be their decision.
You make a very good point. It is uh with a lot of good work has already been put into this. Um, does anyone wanna make a motion? The select board does meet next Tuesday. Uh we don't have to have anything to bring to them, but it's convenient. They they do meet in a few days. Bill?
So my my suggestion on that is if you want to send it to them, great. I think it would be at the next on Tuesday, say, hey, we've got this wrapped up. We're gonna have it on the agenda for the twentieth, because the agenda for Tuesday is done and out. So letting them know that it's coming for the next one, and I can send it to them ahead of time, so that way they have time to.
Right.
Review it, but I I I think if we try and they they wouldn't make a decision on it.
Right, the packet has gone out to them.
That's 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 all done, but saying on Tuesday, hey, it's coming, and we can we can give it, I can give it to them Tuesday for the for discussion in two weeks.
Right.
So um I'd be happy to make a motion. However, I how will we deal with that thing? I kind of agree with Andy. Do we do we do a range of fees and let them kind of make that decision? Do we? What does everybody feel about that?
Dana?
Um, I was, I'm I'm feeling like you are, um Jerry, as well as uh Andy, but. Uh Barbara gave us three possible options. We could consider more. And so I just want to review those because that might help with whatever motion somebody wants to make. Cause I I'm using your motion guy, and I'm not clear what motion I would want to make at this point. But anyway. Uh one was that we can vote to send the ordinance as is to the um to to the select board. What I'm hearing is that that's really not where we're at. Two was we can edit more on the uh the document. I guess that includes looking at the fee schedule. And then the three third one that she gave us was to set up a a committee to that would um uh help us work through the 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 process. And what I'm hearing is that most people don't think that that's necessary. So uh perhaps uh Jerry, the uh the the motion is around editing. I I I don't know and what that would uh what that would look like, so that we would edit one more time at another meeting. And then uh do a final review to submit to the uh select board. And to Bill's point, perhaps we can let the select board know that uh at their at the meeting following our next.
The twentieth, the twentieth.
Meeting on the twentieth, whatever it is.
July third.
Twenty second.
No, because.
Oh.
They need twice before you meet.
Yeah, 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 right. So theirs would.
Oh, we're we're talking about we we need another meeting on this?
No, I I'm.
I I know what you're thinking. So July fourth would be the next meeting, but it will not be. So it's likely gonna be July third, but they get to decide that on Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's not there yet.
So my 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 point was that if if we need to edit more, the editing is probably not gonna happen this evening. I mean, maybe it is.
Good.
Well, so far we all we have the uh the change to the inspection. That's all we've got.
Change the inspection and potential fee schedule adjustment.
So I I did I did some quick math. So the the when I when I was trying to cup basically cover the 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 vendor fee. That was with the eighteen that I found and roughly, I think it was like fifty bedrooms. So it can absolutely come down like I and and with the thirty at fifty bedrooms, we will we'll we'll cover it. So it we can do fifty fifty and. You know, I I I think it'd be, I I. This is not meant to make money for the town.
Right.
That's not a ab- absolutely at all what it's gonna do. So I I I think I would be completely comfortable saying fifty and fifty. And then at the end of the year, if we want to change that, that's a that's a it's a sixty day amendment, and that's just a a change that goes into effect. That's that's not a, that's really not a big deal, but I don't think we'd be shorting ourselves. If anything, we'd be. Maybe short a couple hundred dollars difference, which that wouldn't have an impact on on the town budget.
Town budget, right. Uh Andy?
I'd rather be short than over a lot.
Andy's got his hand again.
Yes, um I'd just like to say I I'm not in favor of putting anything further into a committee. I think we should just work on this in in open session the way we have been. Uh I definitely agree with Bill. Uh some. I I well, let me say this. I think that in within a year. You're gonna see somewhere between sixty and a hundred properties. I base this on the fact that. On Hitzel Terrace, we know of of three different houses that are really potentially set up for Airbnb. And can easily be made into that. I think there's um far more as you go around the community. So I thi- I think the thing to do is to have the fee structure set low enough so that people will comply. And not feel that it's um that they're being singled out. Uh to pay a and what they might be viewing as an extremely high fee. And I really do feel we could work on it tonight, or we could just do one more meeting, work on it and get it to the select board.
Sherman?
I'm I'm with Andy. I I think we we have something that is understandable. I don't have any questions about it. Uh I think it's clear, and if changes have, if there are things that have to be changed, we can change them going forward. And am I I'm at a point where I think with the exception of of fees. I'm ready to send it to the select board. I I don't.
They can always punt it back to us.
Listen to, we have asked for comments, we've received comments, we've comments we could address, we've addressed. And I'm ready to send it to the select board.
Okay, um I'm still searching for a motion.
Jerry, does that help you with?
Well, no, that that it 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 helped me to the point that if the if I do feel we need to address the fees. So if there's not an easy way to get to that point, perhaps that's another meeting. Perhaps that gives everybody time to think think it through. I don't know, but. I I'm if everybody if if everybody was ready to set a fee schedule, I'm pretty much ready. I think we've done, we've done a good job. I think we're in a good spot.
We've had we've had a good amount of time to reflect on this as well.
Done well, I think. It's it's simple. I really agree with Sherman. It's it's really pretty easy to understand. If we don't overburden people and and the safety is addressed, that's important. That's where we're headed, I think.
So I don't know if I can get this together, but I will make a motion. I will move, I I move that we reduce the fees to fifty dollars instead of a hundred dollars. And that we send this to the select board with our recommendation that this is.
And this being the the latest draft.
The latest draft. This is what we've done this, and and with with just some of the. Some examples of comments that we received when we had a a meeting here about it. So the select board understands the comments that we received, the 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 nature of the comments have received.
Does that include Sherman as a friendly amendment, the uh recommendation to um paragraph ten? Uh under section six regarding the um uh the frequency of.
It does, it does. The the frequency of.
Including inspection.
Yes.
I'll second that motion then.
Okay. Discussion. Mary Beth?
Um, I take back what I said about the committee. I agree with what you guys are saying about sending it to the select board. I mean, it's a seven-page document and agree that it's clear. And spend, you know, spending much more time on it, I don't think would be that much of a benefit. And we, you know, the select board can review what we have and they can always have comments. And so I support the motion to send it the way it is with the changes suggested.
Okay, I think Norm was first.
Just want to make sure I understand the motion. The fee is, the $50 fee is the application fee?
The registration fee.
Registration.
Yeah, 50 and 50.
Section 1. And $50 per bedroom.
Right, yes.
So it's cutting those two fees.
My next question.
Absolutely.
So it's that, it's the section six change so that there's one initial fire safety inspection?
And only one.
And only one.
Unless Only one.
Unless the change of hands or
And the other changes the town attorney made from the last draft.
One thing I, I will probably suggest is the, the adoption and effective date paragraph is the standard one we use. The effective date we would probably specify is sometime more than 60 days out because there's no way to get those inspections lined up in time. No, no way. So that would be, that would be, we'd, we'd run into a horrible regulatory problem at that point. We, so
Well, most ordinances don't even cite a, a, a date. I mean, it just goes to effect
It says, it's, becomes effective 60 days from, from the date the select board adopts it. So that's, that's, that's the, the period where there, there's the, the public
So you're, you're saying that's not going to be possible?
I'm saying we, I'm saying we, we would, we should talk about a date that's like, I'm thinking maybe like July 1st of, of 24. Because we want to make sure everybody that has one knows about it. So it gives them the opportunity a, 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 a long time. So I think
Inspection.
That there, there's no, the first registration would not be due until July 1st of 2024. And that gives plenty of time to work through schedules and things like that. So
And get the inspection.
You're right. And, and, yeah, I'm sorry, but we went
Yeah, so that's in section 10. So does the maker of the, the motion agree to that?
I agree with that.
And the seconder of the maker?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, any, any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Does everybody understand? Uh, we didn't address the review of it.
I think, I, I believe the select board is kind of, I believe we're giving them a gray document and then they could review it, correct? I mean, they could choose to review it in, in a year or spit it back to us or whatever. So I think, I think as it stands.
The select board has an additional charge to us that will come back and it's still would, I think, meet Bill's suggested timeline of, of an implementation date of July 1, a year from now. So I, I, I think we would have ample time to be able to do any additional review the select board would ask us to do.
And presenting it to the select board, we, we could, we could say that, that this is, this is a first. We've done it. And we realize that there may be cause going forward to change it. And we're ready to discuss it when there's an issue.
Okay. So for voting purposes, neither alternate would be voting since we have got a full slate here tonight. Are we ready for the vote?
One clarification question as per our operating procedures. Uh, Bill does need to indicate the roll call vote since two of our members voting are adjoining via Zoom.
Um, that's only if it's not unanimous.
If it's not unanimous, right, right.
Yeah. Which we don't know.
Well, right, anticipation of vote.
Okay, we'll do the question. All those in favor of sending the draft ordinance to the select board with the changes we've been talking about in the last few minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no roll call is needed?
The votes are known.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll, I'll bring it up next, next Tuesday, but it will be formally presented to the select board on the 20th. The 20th of June. Okay. Um, I, I think we've, in old business, I think we've done the second item pretty much, review comments from the public on, on the ordinance unless anyone else wants to make sure that a particular comment gets relayed to the select board. Or if you just want Bill and I to pull something together. Okay.
Don't we already have information that was recorded in the minutes about the processing of that? So I don't know that there's any other purpose that we would have tonight to revisit that, is there?
Yeah, I think I just put it in the, the agenda, just in case we want, we needed to refer back to some of the comments, but I think we all
I think
We're all pretty fresh in our memory. Okay, down to the town administrator report on Act 250 applications. There's a few of them out there.
There's two at the moment. Uh, one GMP filed for work on the Penn Stock, the big pipeline Northwood Park. They're dealing, they're dealing with the follow-up on that. Um, that's kind of formality, but hopefully they get done soon. The other and more exciting one is, uh, the redevelopment of the Friendly's property. Uh, that has been fully submitted. Um, I don't know if they've heard back on, it's been accepted yet or not, but that is going to be a complete tear down and rebuild. And Mary found out, I haven't seen it yet, but she has found out that uh, it is going to be an additional Starbucks location. Uh, but that's going to have a much better traffic flow. But they've, they've done a lot of work to that. It's going to be, they're going to completely renovate the whole site and start over again. So that's in there right now. So we've signed off on our questionnaire and that's, that's off and running.
And the car wash one, that's a little bit farther south. Where does that stand? The eco car wash?
I don't have anything official on that yet. It's, the building's down, which, which is great. I don't know what, I don't know where they're at in their process right now. I don't, I don't have anything official on that. So
And that was the former
Ground round.
Ground round, right.
Under what?
Ground round.
Yeah, so that's
Okay, yes. Some activity in town. Um, I've missed a couple of select board meetings. Anything that we should report out to this group?
No, it's been pretty good. Uh, the, the subdivision ordinance. Kevin has it. That's the, that's the short and sweet answer at this moment. Um, there's been, he, he was, he was working on this, the short-term rental ordinance for us. He got that to us. There's another thing that he, he has to work on for us in, in, in front of this. So that's what he's doing right now in the board meeting. Hopefully after the board meeting, we'll be good and he can continue on this. I don't, I don't know. I asked him for a, a, I, I, if we don't hold it to a timeline and he couldn't even give me one. So I, I don't know yet how long it's going to be, but he, he has everything. He has the three versions, the change list. He has, he has it all. So he's fully, fully informed.
Well, at least he got back to us quickly on the short-term rentals, I guess. Okay, announcements and news. Um, the joint energy committee. We haven't been able to set a date. Um, and in regards to the townwide celebration, uh, we're still working on energy components of that, but I don't see that in any of the publicity for the celebration yet.
Uh, well, we had to get it out. So there's, there's some flyers, everything, but certainly, we, that's why there's the and more. But we want to get to this, all four kids go out and I have to get them printed and it's a whole thing. So it's
Okay.
That's, that's our job. But certainly all the online stuff will reflect that. But yeah, that's, that's something we, we, and if, you know, there's space there. So we can, we can get that in, no problem.
Okay, yeah. Uh, we have same son as another display. And actually they have some, some package, if you want to call it a deal, for Rutland County residents until the end of August. So they're like, oh, okay, we can, we can certainly promote that. So we've got same son. Um, I'm going to go to the town school science fair. I think it's Wednesday and see if any of the kids want to, any, you know, if they want to bring their exhibits, their, their whatever to, to the celebration. Electric bikes. I don't think we'll be able to do much with that. We don't have, we don't have a, a partner with that. And, and Northwood Park is now prohibited
On the trails.
On the trails.
On the trails.
But paved areas are fine. Okay. Okay, we'll see. Maybe we can work something out. So hopefully we can get a meeting. I'll, I'll put another, send another email out to Mary. And is Joe part of that group now? Yeah, I don't know either. He, he was sent, he, he was forwarded the, you know, Mary asked him, when can he meet?
I think probably, he probably is. Look at, find him.
What's, what's the date again for the
August 19th, Saturday, August 19th, 10 to 2.
Next time you guys meet, I'll send beautiful flyers in the hallway. So don't worry.
And the fireworks are the second?
Second, yes.
Any other announcements or news to share?
What was that, August what?
19th is the townwide celebration. And the 4th of July is July 2nd. The fireworks.
Fireworks July 2nd, 4th, July 1st, July 4th.
Sherman?
There's a, a question. Do, do we plan to do the subdivision updates? To review them?
Bill just kind of did that.
The town attorney has them.
Oh, alright.
So we're, now we're just waiting for them to come back. I don't, I don't anticipate them being soon.
We're treading water still.
Okay, I didn't understand. I, I
Yeah.
I did hear.
I think we've done everything we can with them.
Okay.
And we need his help to polish it up. Okay. Let's go to the minutes of May 11th.
Move to approve the minutes of May 11th.
Thanks to Jerry.
Uh, there was one typo that I think uh, needs to be addressed, even though it's a small one, only because of the readability and what it means on page three. Uh, top of the page, under paragraph two. Uh, it begins with, "A question was asked on our vendor ordinance." I think it's supposed to be, "If a yard sale required a permit." And so, uh, we, we can just write that in Barbara or whatever, um, rather than having Bill go back and change the whole thing. But that was my readability, I, I thought that needed to be changed because I had to read it a couple of times to figure out what it was saying. Came up with it was if.
Anything else?
Is it, yeah, one question. I understand what vendor means, but I think in the context of the sentence, it might be clearer to say an outside company
That's specified in the ordinance though.
Vendor?
Yes.
The word is?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a very, it's a very long definition. So I don't, we don't want, we don't want to put that.
Okay, fine.
We'll give Norm a couple seconds.
You specify that our proposed ordinance. Vendor?
Do you adjourn?
Not yet.
We talked about the peddles, the vendor ordinance, the separate ordinance altogether. Um, vendor is not in this, what ordinance are you looking at?
I don't know. I'm looking at the minutes and it's under public comment on the draft short-term rental.
Okay.
And the last line on, last paragraph on page one, last sentence, it says, "A vendor would likely be hired, but at a cost of approximately $3,000."
Yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And it's, it just isn't clear. An outside company would be hired to
A vendor, yeah, that's what we call them.
A vendor.
Yeah.
Alright, if that's what you call it, then
I think that's pretty standard, Norm.
Okay.
Instead of adding personnel, you need to hire somebody.
Well, I understand.
Okay.
I just didn't know whether the public would understand.
Okay, so I will, if I, if I may, unless this is a discussion, I would, um, make an amendment to my own motion to accept the minutes, uh, with that one change.
I'll second.
Have to say.
It was hard. Struggled.
Okay, all those in, oh, Andy?
Oh, could we?
Love that hand.
I would suggest this change on the, on that thing. A vendor to monitor short-term rental sites would likely be hired. That way it defines who the vendor is.
Uh, okay, repeat that. You broke up a little bit, a vendor to
Monitor short-term rental site, short-term rental websites.
At websites.
I, I, if you want to specify, I would say to help identify short-term rental properties.
Yeah, that makes me much more confident.
That's, yeah, it's fine, specify it. But yeah, let's, because they would be hired to help identify short-term rental properties in town.
That's actual, I agree, Andy.
Okay, how about the makers of the motion?
I will amend my motion to accept the changes, uh, the minutes as amended.
Okay, so we just have those two changes, right?
Yep.
One on page three and the one on page one. Okay, ready for the motion?
Yep.
All those in favor of the amendments, uh, the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Post. Okay. Leave those here for Bill. And
Our motion is adjourned.
I'll second, okay, go ahead. You get it.
If it's required, yeah, I'll say.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.